I'd like to call for meeting to order for July 16th, 2019. Please turn on your microphones if you haven't. Mr. Odom and Mr. Woods will not be here this evening. Mr. Steen is coming shortly, but let's start on time. Ms. Plato, would you give us a short invocation, please?
Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity of coming out to meet one more time. We ask your blessings, keep our minds focused on the things at hand, and we ask you to go along with us and stand by us and keep us focused on what we need to do. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you. Before we have approved the agenda items, we need to make one change under Old Business, item 3B, ordinance 786, for the project Beethoven, has an amended title and council must first vote to approve the amended title before the second reading to take place. The formal title is, "An ordinance to identify and induce the economic development project in Marlborough County, South Carolina, known as the county by a certain company for the time being identified as Project Beethoven, to authorize pursuant to Title 12, Chapter 44 of the Code of Laws of South Carolina, 1976, as amended, the execution delivery of a fee in lieu of avalarum tax agreement by and between the county and Project Beethoven, to provide for fee in lieu of an avalarum tax incentives and certain special source revenue credits and other matters, and other related matters, second reading." The amended title reads, "Ordinance 786, an ordinance authorizing the execution delivery of a fee in lieu of avalarum taxes and special source revenue credit agreement by and between Marlborough County, South Carolina, and a company known to the county at this time as Project Beethoven with respect to certain economic development property in the county, whereby such property will be subject to certain fee in lieu of avalarum taxes, including the provision of certain special source revenue credits and other matters there, related there, too." I ask for a motion to amend item 3B, to amend the title that was just read.
Motion made to amend item 3B.
All right, it's been moved in second that we amend the title for item 3B under Old Business. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands. All right, thank you, it's approved. Now we'll have approval of agenda items. Motion, please.
Motion.
All right, it's been moved in second that we approve the agenda items to include the amended title under item 3B. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand, thank you. Next, we have approval of minutes, first, a regular council meeting, June 11th, 2019.
I move we accept those minutes as written.
It's been moved in second that we accept the minutes for the June 19th, 2019, minutes as written. All in favor, please let it be known by raising your right hands, thank you. The call, council meeting on June 24th, 2019.
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved in second that we accept the minutes for the call, council meetings on June 24th. Yes, ma'am. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand, with one extension, Ms. Plato, thank you. All right, proceeding to Old Business, ordinance 785, authorizing Marlborough County to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the Marlborough County School District and the Marlborough County Sheriff's Department and Marlborough County for the school resource officer program. This is third reading. Mr. Moll, do you have any?
We haven't had any additional discussions with the school district, but we did ask you, go ahead and consider approving the third reading in case there was some change during the year. We'd have all the details ready to go and the terms in place.
All right. Questions or comments? All right, entertain a motion.
Motion, second.
It's been moved in second that we approve third reading of ordinance 785 with a memorandum of understanding concerning the school resource officers. All in favor, please let it be known by raising your right hands, thank you. Ordinance 786 is the one we just amended, the title, authorizing the execution delivery of a fee in lieu of avalarum taxes and special source revenue credits by and between Marlborough County, South Carolina, and a company known to the county at this time as Project Beethoven with respect to certain economic development property in the county, whereby such property will be subject to certain fee in lieu of avalarum taxes, including the provision of certain special source revenue credits and other matters there, too. Your comments for us, sir?
Yes, ma'am, this is a, an economic development project involving a solar field and so this is second reading, however, before the final reading, we'll have information in a work session or discussion since the incentives are a little different than what we're used to. But this is a large solar project that would bring significant tax value into the county.
All right. So, we ask for...
I move we approve ordinance 786.
All right, second reading entitled, and you second, Ms. Plato? Thank you. All in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands, thank you. All right, New Business, ordinance 787, to authorize installment payments of taxable real property within Marlborough County as provided by South Carolina Code, Section 124575. First reading title only. Mr. Moll?
Yes, ma'am, this is the first step towards authorizing, or giving authorization to the treasurer's office to be able to collect property taxes on installment basis if that becomes part of the trash collection options that we're discussing. So it's done by title only, we, of course, will have a lot of discussions with the treasurer's office and there are others that are involved in that before we get to the next reading, but that's what this is, to start the process of at least being able to do that if council so chooses.
All right, thank you. All right, entertain a motion to approve ordinance 787, entitled only.
Motion, second.
All right, it's been moved in second, all in favor, let it be known by raising your right hands, thank you. All right. Come on, join us, sir, I'm glad you could make it. You know, we understand, we've heard about your situation, it's been resolved. All right, Resolution 071901, inducing and identifying a proposed investment under code name of the project Beethoven and other matters related there, too.
This, of course, is a companion resolution to the other ordinance you've approved, it's just the format that we legally have to take to begin offering these incentives, so it's the same project.
Okay. Questions, comments, all right, or entertain a motion.
I move we accept this resolution.
It's been moved in second that we accept Resolution 071901. Please vote in favor. Okay, unanimous, thank you. Review and discussion of memorandum of agreement by and between South Carolina State Election Commission and Marlborough County and the Board of Voter Registration and Elections of Marlborough County. We, I'm recommending that we table this item until we have clarity from the South Carolina Association of Counties. They are recommending that counties not adopt this at this time because there are some unknown costs and some other things that may not be in the county's best interest. Do you have anything you want to add to that, Mr. Moll?
No, I did check with some other counties, Marion County and some other counties, and they have not approved this yet because the cost could be anywhere from 20, 30 to 80, $100,000. And there's also concerns about the election agency, not the county one, but the state one, what they're asking is not within their authority to ask and the way they've done it. So we're waiting for Association of Counties, as you mentioned, and then we can act.
All right. So I'm recommending that we table this until we have more information. I'd like to entertain a motion, yes, sir.
Motion, second.
All right, it's been moved in second that we table item 4C until we have more information in order to make an informed decision. Next, appointments to boards and commissions, do we have any? All right, reports, Mr. Carbo, an update on the solid waste collection options?
Carbo, I apologize to you all, I'm suffering from jet, for real. It's not. It's the price you pay for having...
Madam Chair, members of council, we started the RFP process for solid waste collection options that we've been talking about for the last couple of months. The RFP packets became available on 7/1, we quickly realized that that was a short week and a vacation week, so we extended the bid open to the 29th and the 15th. So we give them a couple of extra weeks, that gives the vendors time to, you know, go through because it's a very intense RFP, so there are certain things they have to do, like implementation plan.
But the right date was that, for the 21st?
29th of July, at 10:00 a.m. over here. But there's several things that they have to do to be an eligible lender, so we moved it to the 29th, so they have time and we get the best we can for the county. So the bids will be open on 29th, 10:00 a.m., and that'll give us time, that'll give us a couple of weeks to evaluate the vendors and, you know, get everything together for all this meeting so we can get everything together. So right now, that's pretty much where we are. We have five active companies that are, that have been asking questions, are involved and planning on bidding, and I've given seven packets out. I think one of the packets was for the cart vendor, he just wanted to be involved in case, whoever wanted to bid, he could sell his product, but I got five avenue vendors that are planning on bidding, is there any questions?
I don't have any, thank you, sir.
We are going to two options also, so we got the option of us putting on taxes and collecting and then, you know, doing it like we are right now.
All right, okay, sounds good. It's good to know that these five companies are interested.
We'll have more information on Thursday.
Thank you. Mr. Watts, an update?
Been in operation a little more than two weeks, had a chance to work out the kinks, maybe, if there are any. Oh, all right. A little bit.
So, I get to have time to speak, I guess. Again, I'd like to watch, again, thank you for what I'm bringing up tonight, Madam Chairman and members of the board. Wanted to talk very quickly about the EMS operations and what we have been doing since July 1st of midnight, so again, we did start Monday, July 1st at midnight. Just so everybody knows, we have 27 field providers, and that's three operations supervisors, that's 12 paramedics and 12 EMTs, and of those, currently, we have 23 of those positions filled, so there are four paramedic physicians that are not filled at this point. Our deployment plan with four ambulances, 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, one supervisor quick response vehicle and two administrative quick response vehicles, so the paramedic load of ambulances are two minutes.
We might need to move it, it's going in and out, in and out, in and out, just moving just a little bit.
Black and white.
Yeah, just for everybody to see, I don't know, whenever it moved over, it went in and out.
Until, till.
I don't know what's, I don't know, I mean, it just, I don't know what it was costing to be there.
So two weeks, one in the office, relative to the office, and one in Wallace that will be moved into, how we know, we're short, put in a month. With that being said, for 15 days, we've had 210 responses, this was at a midnight today, so 214 responses, so that's an average of about 14 a day, a little seven and a half points. And then transports, we're actually transporting 72% of the costs, so 154 transports, averaging about 10 a day, and a little seven and a half, 16. We had actually figured and counted on about 65% transport, so that's a little bit higher than we thought it would be. The response times that we have is typical of any emergency medical services system. Most of the patients are classified as just general sickness, and everywhere you go, the next highest is either fall or respiratory distress, or get one or the other, and then follow by testing, so you can see what the types of calls are. The places that we're transporting to, you see that Scott Memorial and McCloud Church are all, are neck and neck, and to be real honest, I think that, just listening to that you probably, this morning, the McCloud Church is probably a little bit higher right now, but they're neck and neck. You know, also go to the Ellen, take some of the Florence, as well as a few other places , Southern Road, Florence. Response times, our average response time is measured from dispatch to arrival at the scene, and so far, our average is nine minutes and 48 seconds, and just for comparative purposes, we're less than 15 minutes 89% of the time. And the EMS task force report from December of 2018, the stated average response time there was 11 minutes and 14 seconds, and less than 15 minutes and 76 was that, so, you know, adding another unit and that kind of stuff certainly helps, but so that's kind of where we are there. Some of the new issues that we have, you know, I mentioned we do have four paramedic physicians open and we are working very hard to recruit those guys. We are currently using a combination of part-time and overtime to be able to fill the slots. We did have a vehicle failure over the weekend that turned out to be a brand new truck, and it turned out to be an OEM battery issue, but we did lose some unit hours, we lost about 36 hours because of that, we only had three trucks for 36 hours. And then finally, we had one case where our demand, more calls than our order ambulances, and so, you know, I talked about the supervisor quick response vehicle, that doesn't happen often, but the supervisor was able to respond within seven minutes, it was a seven minute response now, and then they used a local product provider to fit it for the hospital, so it actually turned out to be a period of exercise. And with that, another squib, and I'll ask any questions.
Would you not use Wallace as your backup instead of a private provider, or before you would access?
Yes, ma'am, so yesterday, when that actually happened, all four of our ambulances, as well as one of Wallace's ambulances, were out of calls already. We did meet with Wallace today, and I think in probably your package design, it's a contract with him to supervise just that.
All right. Ms. Steen?
No, I mean, I think it's, yeah, it's going good, you know, response times is a great thing, you know, with any new service, there's always going to be hiccups, you know, and you know, the only thing to do is, you know, is bring those to the table, work through those hiccups, or whatever it is, you know, and build on them and, you know, get a good foundation, we have a good foundation, and we're looking forward to move forward, so thank you for your hard work, the EMS, the paramedics, EMT supervisors, all of them, like I said, I know they're putting in countless hours and countless training, so I'd say it'd be good, you know, I think we've asked and, you know, have a, maybe a community meeting with the other EMS and public safety officials, you know, gather in that way, I know some of the protocols may be changed from what we're used to, you know, about the, calling in the air care for helicopter, you know, just some of the things where everybody get on the same level from, you know, since it's brand new, I think that'd be a good move to make, and that way, and that way, some of your staff can find, you know, meet some of the staff that's been, you know, the volunteers that's been here for a long time, I think that'd be a good time, and a good community relations building supper, so if we can get that scheduled.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Moll?
We do, we do feel like we probably need another spare unit, you know, we have one spare and we, we're a little late getting it than we planned on, which is okay, well, you know, it's okay, it's done now, but we may need to come up with another spare, we can, we can do that within the budget we have, we're not talking about a $150,000 ambulance, so if it rises to the level that we need council approval, we'll, of course, come to you all, if it's lesser, we won't, because as Mr. Watts said, he had a failure over the weekend, and then today, he had one of them acting up, another one, a brand new one, so, you know, if we can get another spare, I think that's a good idea.
What were you thinking of getting another used one like we borrowed, or just another new, just another used one to get back just for spare?
A lower level even than the other spare, you know, just something. Then the other thing, to just elaborate on something that's, you know, different, I think, than what we're used to in the county, is with these quick response vehicles, in the past, you would have calls that would be waiting for a long time, because, say you had three or four calls at one time, you prioritize those, and the lesser one maybe sat there for 45, 50 minutes, or in some cases, longer. Now we're able to actually go out to the scene, but what that creates is a situation of where we're able to give some care to that person, but we don't have anything to take them to the hospital then. So, you know, at your last meeting, you approved a, you know, the ability to have franchise agreements and mutual aid agreements with different services, so they're working hard to have those agreements in place, so if we had that situation and they have a pre-qualified private group or something, you know, in place, they can call on them for something that's not a critical kind of situation. So it's just different, you know, I think it's a better level of care, but it is different.
Thank you, sir.
So if I may, this afternoon, early this afternoon, it was a response of an Austrian for a party that was in a coma, and so they were shot, and got a heart beating back again, and by the time they got to the, to the hospital, the breathing tube had to be removed, and all that, because they were re-reading consciousness.
Good.
So that is a, that's a big thing, it was a quick response, that was a lesson for that.
That's good.
Good, that's good.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you. Mrs. Moore?
Can't see you.
Yeah, turn, yeah, turn that, oh, psychedelics, something going on.
Madam Chair, members of council, as we noted, our fiscal year ended June 30th, and we've already begun the process of funding our local annuals, we're receiving adjustments from our auditors that will affect our year in total, and after this is concluded, we will be engaging with our final reports. At the last meeting, Dr. Kent, you asked about the total amount that the county has been shorted in the local government fund over the last several years. There are several reports listed on the South Carolina Association of Counties website concerning this huge shortage. I use this information to compile the bar graph that you all have in the fiscal report. The graph shows that for fiscal years 2009 through 2019, our county has received 3.9 million dollars less than what the formula allocated. From the most recent, only in this fiscal year, for 6/30/19, the county allocation was 617,077 dollars less than the formula requires. This is equivalent to nine tax meals in one fiscal year, and also, this means that the county received only 65% of what we should have for the most recent fiscal year, had the formula been followed. And when we're looking at the graph, the blue represents what we should have been for the formula, and the orange represents what we haven't been getting.
Wow.
Any questions?
So thank you for taking the time to compile this, and for the 11 years we have been shorted, 3.9 million dollars. Imagine what we could do for our citizens if the legislators had kept their promise and sent all the counties the monies they should, based on the local government fund, so I know I have a history of talking about this, but now you see it in red, what we're missing, and we sorely need that money, but what can we do?
Yeah, especially when they have a surplus of a billion dollars, I think, last year, and then you see 600,000 dollars that should be allocated to the county, but yet they had a surplus of a billion dollars, so, you know, something's not going on in Columbia, right? Or we should receive the amount that's coming. I mean, they said the formula's wrong, but nobody's willing to change the formula, I mean, they're not even willing to work on it, so, I mean, nine tax meals is a lot for a county of our size, I mean, that's, I mean, that could be a reduction, you know, either a reduction in taxes or either more provided for what we have, so that's, that's a lot to save. Thank you.
Yeah, and every year, they vote to amend the formula and not return the money according to the formula, and sadly, members of our delegation vote to amend or suspend the formula.
At the rate it's going now, in 10 years, we won't be a local government fund. At the way, at the rate it's going now, it started at 100,000, now it's up to, I mean, almost 600, I mean, just in 10 years, it's just going to eliminate the, what we do get.
Exactly. Along with unfunded mandates, so. All right, Mr. Moll?
I'm sure I can see me. Yeah.
She's going in her own direction.
Yeah, they don't care about smaller cars.
Madam Chair, the frustrating part about the local government fund is that, you know, there's always this hoopla within Association of Counties stuff that we see like, oh, it's going to be fixed this year, and I, of course, don't believe it, and then we find out it's even worse this year than it was prior. And from what we hear through that crowd is, you know, it's going to take somebody, some county suing legislature, legislature over the situation. Nine tax meals in this county is a lot of money, and could either cut taxes or do some good. As far as administrators report, we have our service anniversaries as we do every month. We have Doronda Harrington with eight years, Sherronica Henigan, 12 years, and Rob Stanton with 21 years. As you know, coming up at the end of this month, first next month, is the Association of Counties meeting, if you need any more information, Ms. Bundy can help you with that. With regards to economic development, we're working with Attorney McLeod to do the final legal steps to clear the title on the plant, you know, we've been working on that, but there's a process to that, and we're hopefully close to the end there. We own the property, but we need to have it, everything tight, so we can get some of these grants. The grant folks are lined up, but they need that last box check. You know, as you saw tonight, you took some action on a solar project, we continue to have inquiry, inquiries from potential solar projects here in the county, and those are, you know, decent projects because they pay taxes without a lot of use of what we have here, you know, they don't necessarily use the fire truck or EMS or that kind of thing, so we'll take those. With the, with regards to regular administrator's report, we did get, Mr. Carbo got, had, was able to get an update on some of the damaged roads, I think Mr. Steen was asking about that, and I'll give you what's here. With 381, there is an agreement, agreement's been reached between DOT and the property owner, which will require the landowner to pay some of the, some of the cost of rebuilding the dam, according to the plans, which have been reviewed. Once that's done, DOT will build the road back on top of the dam. Mr. Odom couldn't be here for a doctor's thing, but he might know more about that. Old Wire Road and Academy Road, DOT advises that DEHEC is coordinating with the property owners, as these are DEHEC dams. Once the property owners decide on a plan, then DOT can become, can begin coordinating with them about building roads back. I think that's a nice way of saying that nothing's happened, so, you know, there's a tremendous amount of expense in repairing these roads, and I think that's being laid on the property owners, for the most part. Level Green Church Road, that project is nearing completion, that's behind Powell, you know, where Powell used to be. That's behind Powell, you know, where Powell used to be. That road had like a hundred and twenty car day car count and they built a bridge over it without a whole lot of discussion. So it is a little bit hard to figure out why they want, what they're doing. And Davis Mill Pond Road, which runs before you get to the prisons, is nearing completion with a completion date of August fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. Now, I'm not sure if there's two breaks there. There's one, there's one at Mill Pond down there and then there's one up from the Mill Pond. And I'll be honest with you, I don't know which one they're just talking about here. I think they're talking about not the Mill Pond one. So we'll keep, we'll try to keep you all informed on this, but it's discouraging when you see it, particularly Old Wire Road and Academy Road, you know, major thoroughfares that can't, they're not even there, not even moving toward the end of it. Lastly, the staff, the different volunteers that work for the county came together and served lunch at the Community Kitchen here in town on July tenth. We served a hundred and thirty-four folks and we had a meal of grilled chicken, baked beans, slaw, and all the fixings. So I don't know, how are we going to top that next time? It was cooked on the grill, it was really nice, like I said, had a good turnout. We're happy to be a part of that community event and, of course, council and employees are signing up just to make next time as we've obligated to do this every second Wednesday of each month. And we feel like we've got enough people that we can always get a crew. We had too many people this time, we were stumbling all over each other, but we kind of got it down pat now. So be sure to see Ms. Bundy, so you can get your name down on the date. And that's all I have.
All right, questions or comments? All right, we have one citizen, Mr. Randy Wallace.
Mr. Randy?
Yes.
I know it's so exciting, you know.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not an earthquake speaker, but I'm here to find out one thing on the garbage deal. Back with Charlie Ocean, up to Claude Ricker, up to announce. We had to bring dumpsters, but people were dumping everything from dead dogs to furniture and they're not being maimed. So then they came out with red rollout carts. A lot of old folks can handle them where they can't handle a dumpster down the road somewhere. So that's why I came to the horse's mouth to find out. I'd be willing to bet you, half the people in Marlborough County don't have a trash can. If you don't believe it on trash, they just ride through the country. You'll have ten trailers, two of them got trash cans, the others don't. So guess what, it's going in the woods now by my house if I don't catch it. I don't know what the total length is, but what we got, the dumpsters didn't work and now the trash cans ain't working. Now they want to go back to the dumpsters, so what do we do? The whole world has a trash pile. That ain't what I'm here for. I got a lot of flak on the rollout carts to start with, me being one. But we didn't have a problem with the trash distribution. We had a problem, and here it is on your front doorstep, it's yours, you're going to pay thirty dollars in advance if it gets lost, you've got to pay for it. The way it was handled was inappropriate far as I'm concerned. And I ain't the sharpest knife in the drawer. But I've been in this town since nineteen, latter part of nineteen fifty-two. Just young man here with the rescue squad. If you've got an ambulance going to University of Charleston Medical University, you're looking at six hours turnaround, at least six hours. So if you've got so many ambulances, one in Larnburg, one in Charole, and one in Larnburg, do we have enough people that's EMT, paramedic, or whatever? I drove ambulance service for six years, so I know a little bit about it. And all my life, I wanted what was better for this county. Our educational level, ain't no better than it was twenty years ago. But I'll sit down and hush, now you guys don't know how good it is for you.
Thank you for your comments.
Which way we going, we going to keep the rollout? I'd love to keep mine.
Well, there's several options. One is to keep the rollouts and put it on your tax bill. And tonight, they talked about being able to split your bill up so if it wouldn't get people all at one time. The other would be to keep what you've got and deal with your directly. And then the other option would be to have, where you got to haul it to the dumpster. So council's going to be able to consider it next month because we'll have the prices for that. So next month's an important month.
In other words, I can keep my rollout cart, but I still got to pay forty dollars on my tax.
All that would be adjusted, it wouldn't be both. I can talk to you after the meeting if you tell you.
In other words, instead of making it more simple, we making it more complicated.
I'll explain to you afterwards if you want me to.
All right, thank you. All right, council members at your table position, you have a letter of resignation from Ms. Vicki Harris, the Veteran Affairs Director. You can read it later. I share with most of you the good job and the many things that she's done to help the veterans here in the county. She kind of turned things around and got them very active, involved in things. And she would be sorely missed. So if you have time, please read this letter from Vicki. All right, with that said, we have some comments. We're going to start with you, Ms. Plato.
Okay. Okay. The only thing I have is, I met with, I met with Ms. McNeil, Elizabeth McNeil. And they had, what it is, do y'all know anything about Trucker Tree? Have you heard about Trucker Tree? Anybody know about the Trucker Tree? Trucker Tree, okay. What it is, they had one last year. It didn't, it wasn't, I think Ms. McNeil said it wasn't really that, you know, she wanted to make. In other words, the bottom line is, let me cut it short.
Thank you.
The bottom line is, we want to try to incorporate the county and the city to work together on this Trucker Tree for the children of Marlborough County. Now, it's nothing that's going to be, I've been to a server in North Carolina and I enjoyed it. And it wasn't nothing out there that was scary kids or nothing because everybody got a car to represent in that Trucker Tree and they dressed that car up, and I'm going to get you to get two of them. Dressed that car up and they use like cartoon characters, just different things. Have anybody ever been to one in here? You have? Okay. And it's pretty nice, once, you know, I enjoyed it. But I want to try to get the county and the city to pull it together, which Ms. McNeil said that would be wonderful because we can get a lot of people to participate, put calls in it.
It's like a parade?
No, they're going to have it sort of like, help me out, Mr. Mundy.
Like you're doing in Berks and Park Lot.
Yeah, in that area, walk around and call the kids. But the purpose of it, let me give you the purpose of it, is to get the kids, children together in an area where they can go through and do this and they would enjoy it, rather than going knocking on house to house and would be more safer to me. I feel like it would be more safer if you get the kids to do it this way than then go out different places knocking on houses and stuff. And people are so devilish now and stuff going on and it would be safe to me that they would gather to go and have this done. And I have some more stuff on it next month because I have some pictures and stuff to show you. And actually, what I'm trying to tell you. But I think it would be a great thing if the county and the city could come together and have this, really. And we could get everybody to participate. I really would, really would. That's what I was wanting to talk about. But we'll talk about it some more and see what we can do for is getting it together for the children. But I would love to see it happen. I know it would be a big event and if other people can do it and come together and have a great time for the kids, I don't see why we can't. That's all I'm saying. We got to come together and do something. And I think it would be a great idea if we did it, everybody pull together and show support for it. But just like I said, I'll have some more stuff on it next month. We'll talk about it again and see what happens.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to commend Brian Watts and the staff for the EMS challenge and taking that on. And it seems to be really working good and serving the community great. Thank you for your hard work.
Mrs. Steen?
Just echo what Mr. Meadley said, you know, I mean, Mr. Watts and his staff are working hard, you know. Anytime you start something new, it takes a lot to get it off the ground. And we've been working on this thing since January.
Yes.
Or even longer than that, but I mean, even putting everything in place. So just thank him and, you know, anytime you have, as you call it, an EMS vehicle to save, you know, and get somebody's heartbeat and get them back to a stable condition, I mean, that's good, you know. And so that's a super thing. And so thank the sheriff back there for attending, you know, he's here just about every time, you know, and listening and always to say thank you. But, you know, it's always so much evil out there, but you have some security here. So thank you for coming, sheriff. And so, but for everybody else, we just thank you. I mean, it's kind of, still, I'm glad to hear about the Delta Site, you know, that's some exciting news. Hopefully that's keen to move forward. You know, just the Old Wire Road for the citizens traveling up and down that. You know, I just don't understand, I guess, the state on so many levels. Whenever they want to build a new highway, they take their land and move your house and do whatever and put a road in. Yet whenever there's a road that's messed up, I mean, they just won't fix a road. So I just, I don't understand, I guess, the basics or the principles behind it. And so we'll continue to move forward, but it seems like the state would move that road. And so the question could be is, the landowner never want a road back over their dam when their dam was built, what would happen? Probably the state would take the road, take the property and continue to move forward. So I just think, you know, it's sad. Here we are amongst another hurricane season fixing to be right up under us and, you know, and we still have roads that's not fixed, some major roads that causes people to, you know, spend extra gas money going around getting to work, getting to and from work, kids going back. I mean, the sheriff, emergency vehicles going up and down the road. So soon out there could be something on a state level for, you know, emergency procedures just for that reason. I don't know why, but I mean, it's just, I hear it and we're fighting for it, but there's nothing we can do. I mean, they just have to continue to move forward, so continue to push for it. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Veterans Affair.
Yeah.
Very important. Here we have a Veterans Affair officer that have done a great job, not a good job, a great job. And she don't care about what branch you belong to. Whether you're black or white makes very little difference to her, none at all. But here, for all the work that she have done, she have to leave the county to go to North Carolina to find a job that she can get some respect at. And let me make a claim about the county, this county, our county. Our county respects the Veterans Affair Office and supports it wholeheartedly. I mean, we really do a good job, the council members, our administrator, Ms. Patricia, we work hard with them. And they're pleased with this. So we don't have anything to do with her leaving. She's under contract, which the legislators, our legislators, our main legislator right here, right, appointed her to it. Now, her contract was up in January. We looking at August. You got somebody talking about supporting a household, but don't know if they're going to have a job the next day because their contract haven't been renewed in seven months. I mean, that tells you that you need to start looking someplace else because you got to feed your family. This is conditions that she's been working underneath, that is wrong. I wish we could have done something about this, but she's appointed by them. And see, when you have this here, look at her record, her record don't lie for what she do. Turn around, I believe, that hurts the veterans. Veterans, everybody, veterans, Fourth of July, flags, everything. But nobody really gives a darn about the veterans if they don't come out to support them. And we're not supporting our veterans and we turn around and let our senators and our House representatives turn around and make a person leave because they afraid that they're going to lose their job because their contract has not been filled in seven months. She got to go. I hate to see her go. But this is what we do here in Marlborough County, that got to stop. But I want the newspaper and everybody else to know that the county is not playing any part of that. We do what we supposed to do and we do a good job of it. But our legislators will hang crap over your head and say, you danced to my music or we kick you out. And this is what took place and I'll say this anyplace, anywhere, at any time, because it's a fact. I met with veterans this morning. The second of August, we going to meet again and we going to have a cookout for Ms. Harris, right? We going to do this here. And I hope people come to hear what we have to say, to let everybody know how she's been mistreated for the past seven. She been mistreated longer than seven months. But seven months not knowing if you're going to get fired tomorrow, if you're going to leave tomorrow? Something's wrong with that. We need to do something about that. That needs to stop. I wish we were going to newspaper, I'm glad it's going on Facebook, I'm glad it's out there and it'd be a lot more said about how veterans feel about the way she been treated.
Thank you.
Echo some of that too. I'm going to miss her myself because she did take her job serious and she was, I mean, a good one. I knew her before she even started it and it can be hard to beat her. So anyway, I hope her good luck with what she does and I hope it turns out to be a good thing for her, for her to go on. She really deserves it. On the EMS, I'd like to say that this that we doing now is going to be the biggest help to us because we know what's going on. We got somebody in here that's telling us, we seeing it firsthand. The way it was before, we didn't know when something bad was going on sometime till six months later. Now, you know, at every meeting, we going to know something about the EMS, what's happening. And I think that it's going to only get better. And I want to commend them on what they've done so far. And I just feel like that we on the right track now because when we come in here and we're not just told everything's perfect. I like them telling us what we still need, what we need to do. Even if we don't like to know, we know to know. And I appreciate that.
All right, thank you. I'd like to echo some of the comments that have been made also. And we starting our new fiscal year. Once again, I'd like to thank the administrator and the other supervisors for the job they've done for the county and especially working on the budget considering that we are missing about six hundred thousand dollars owed to us from the state. I'm going to keep talking about that. We're moving forward. I'd like for, as your schedules permit, to do an inventory of all of the buildings the county owns, their current state, if they need any upgrades. There are some things we need to do in repositioning some offices or whatever. So before we can make or recommend changes, then we need to know what we have and what condition they're in so that we can move forward with that. So that's one thing that, and certainly the Delta Site, we need to get back on that project. So we appreciate your timely attention to getting those documents ready for us so that we can move forward and begin looking for grants, so there will be monies out there. With that said, thank you very much for your presence. Do you have something else on your mind, Ms. Plato?
No, I was just, I was just thinking about what he was saying about Vicki, you know. She was a sweet person. I hate that happened to her, but I'm going to quote this and I'm going to be through for today. Grace is when people throw you to the wolves and you laying in the arms of the shepherd. And she's in the arms of the shepherd because they going, he going to take care of her. She going through some stuff right now, but I do know that she's a praying person and I do know the Lord will watch and take care of her and she's going to be all right. But I hate it was done the way it was done, but I know a man higher said hi and he looks low. And what goes around come around and you can believe that. So whatever the person did to her and how it was done, they'll get it back. And they're going to get it back twice as much as they did to her. And that's all I'm.
You need an amen?
Yes.
You're right, and I agree with you, but look how many veterans it's going to suffer.
Yeah, I know.
She's going to be all right.
Exactly, oh, yeah.
But veterans are going to suffer because of this here. That's what bothers me.
Right.
And before we close, I would like to, on behalf of council, offer our condolences to Ms. Sumter. And you have our support.
Yes, yes.
Anything you need, we're there for you. We appreciate it. And take as much time because grieving is personal.
Oh, yeah.
You do what you have to do.
Oh, yeah.
And I know about missing mommas.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Anyway, all right. Let's end on a good note. Stay hydrated, heat stroke is very real. And if you wait until you thirsty to drink water, you already dehydrated, okay? So I think Mr. Wood suffered from that, from some work situations. On that, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much. Turn off your microscopes?
Microscopes.